Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Right, uh, it's six thirty, we'll start the Wednesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the Westminster Select Board. Before we get going, anybody who hasn't signed in, please do so. Uh, we have a lot to go over with budget tonight, so if we can keep comments and opinion pieces to a minimum, so we can just get through things, not be here all night, that'd be great. Uh, any adjustments to the agenda at this time?
Can I just make sure that we have a space in the, we're supposed to be later, like comment, what's it called?
Uh, communications and public comments.
Who, who are you?
Lisa Sparrow.
Yes, you're a communication, he just got to go through the process.
Yeah, we'll get right to you.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Uh, seeing no adjustments to the agenda, we'll move for the acceptance of the minutes.
I move for the acceptance of the minutes for December twenty-eighth, Wednesday, the Westminster Select Board meeting.
Oh, seconded. Uh, motions were made and seconded for the acceptance of the minutes, December twenty-eighth, twenty-two, any discussion? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries?
I move to accept the minutes of January fourth, two thousand twenty-three, for the Westminster Select Board, dated Wednesday, January fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, excuse me. Acceptance of the Westminster Select Board Special Budget Workshop Meeting. I'm sorry.
One second.
Uh, motions were made and seconded for the Jan-, to accept the minutes of January fourth for the Special Budget Workshop Meeting. Uh, any discussion? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Communication and public comment.
Oh.
That's you.
First off.
All right.
Thank you. And I know that you're in a hurry, so I'll just, please, read as I can.
Okay.
But some of you don't know me, I'm Lisa Sparrow, and I live in Westminster West. I've lived there for forty years with my husband, in a house we built, have four kids, live center school, and my kid, two of them, still live in Westminster. So, I know you all by face, but not by name, sorry. Because, for twenty years, I was the pastor down in Guilford, so I didn't particularly pay too much attention up here, because I had my hands full down there. But I retired two years ago, and so now I'm turning my eyes to where I live, and trying to be a good citizen. And I brought along with me, um, two friends, Cliff and Wileen, who live right up the road, also in Westminster, and they moved here from New Jersey, how many?
In two thousand seventeen, we have New York in two thousand seventeen, although we've had our house since two thousand ten.
Yeah.
On Harrington Road.
Just so you know. And we know each other from church and from the NAACP. So, the reason I'm here is because the governor has made a proclamation in two thousand twenty-one, hoping that this state would be a state proud of being equitable to all people, including rural people, urban people, all types of people. And there's a, what's called a declaration of inclusion, that one, that we're hoping one hundred municipalities will sign on to. About eighty-six have done it so far, so we need fourteen more before May one, which is when we're hoping to have it done. I want to just give you a little bit of background. Often, towns will have, this came about, um, after the whole George Floyd thing and the terrible anti-racism, anti-racism uprisings, that, um, a man who may be online, I don't know if he's here, Al, are you, can we see him over there, is Al Wakefield here?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Al Wakefield is here. He was one of the founders of this, um, process. He lives up in Rutland. He and another man, um, came up with this way to be more positive and about it, and to have towns proclaim themselves as being inclusive. I sent you all a lot of literature, so you probably, if you had time, might have looked at it. The thing I wanted to say to you is that the other towns I've worked with on this have been Brattleboro and Putney and Guilford. And in Brattleboro and Putney, they both, they all did it after something terrible happened. So, in Brattleboro, there was a whole lot of anti-racist stuff that happened, and so the town said, we have to do something, and then they came up with this statement, and they're working on things. And Putney, there were a lot of antisemitic things happening, and so then Putney had to scramble and try to figure out what they were going to do, and they used this declaration as a way to kind of claim the fact that they wanted to do things better. As far as I know, at least living here, maybe I'm out of it, but is that Westminster has a pretty good, there's been no big issue. So, it'd be, it's a pretty no duh thing, that it's a town that's welcoming. But on the other hand, I, as a citizen, would be very proud if Westminster was one of the hundred that signs on. So, um, I know that you have to talk about it, the other thing I wanted to say is that some towns, the Select Board just doesn't, like you could just decide to do it after some talk. Other towns think, well, we better take it to town meeting, and then they, then there's a whole discussion, and then often a committee is formed, and maybe a year later, they, they do it. So, I have no expectations of all of you at all, but I would, I would love you to consider it. And, um, I'm happy if you want to take it to town meeting, I can go to town meeting, I presented there, but I also wanted you to at least start thinking about it. Um, I have a copy, which, again, I don't know how much time I have left, I brought along what Deverston's doing, um, they've taken a long time, and it's the statement that they are going to vote on at their town meeting, so if you wanted to see what it would look like, I don't know, do you want me to just, what's the timing here, I mean, should I show people, or should I be quiet and you talk about it later? I want to be respectful. And I, it may be that Al, hi Al, uh, would like to say something, I don't know if you have the facility to do it.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
You can talk through that.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, hi, didn't, didn't expect to say anything, but, but thanks very much for, uh, for allowing me for entertaining this on, on your agenda. Um, I speak for Bob Harnish and Norm Cohen, the other two members of our, what we refer to as our gang of three, Norm's a retired lawyer, and Bob's a, a former innkeeper, one of the more successful inns in, in the area, we've all been in Vermont, uh, a total of about a hundred and forty years or so, we're all over eighty years of age, and so, Bob started this initiative, if you will, which, as Lisa said, now covers some eighty, eighty-eight towns as of today, Washington just adopted Lisa, which was really, really, really good news, and I just finished meeting with the VIA on, hoping to get the governor, uh, in March to, uh, be at a special meeting to talk more assertedly about the Declaration of Inclusion. As you know, the state of Vermont issued a Declaration of Inclusion proclamation, as well as designated the second week in May as Inclusion Week, uh, in, in Vermont, and several towns have, you know, done activities during that week. So, it's, uh, it's very active, uh, our goal, as Lisa said, is to get to one hundred, uh, by, by May, and then on to two forty-six sometime within our, in our lifetimes, all things being, being lucky. Um, only two towns have actually voted on Select Board, uh, Select Boards have overwhelmingly taken it as a part of their leadership responsibilities and authorities to set the tone and to move forward with, uh, with adoption, and so, in, uh, in Clarendon, I think, and in Shittman, both in Rutland County, both those went to the community, and the community voted, um, overwhelmingly, three, four to one or so, in both instances, to, uh, to adopt. So, Select Boards have made that decision themselves, and, um, we can, we're certainly acceptable either way, but we, we do regard this as a, as a Select Board responsibility, and would be, uh, would be delighted to see the Select Board of Westminster move affirmatively to, uh, to, to adopt. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make one comment, please? I want to be respectful of your time as well. My wife and I started looking for houses in Vermont in probably two thousand four, and we have been in every bed and breakfast from Northern Kingdom all the way to, um, the Massachusetts border, and in two thousand ten, I guess, we selected a house on Harrington Road, on Orchard Hill, because we love this community after being here and meeting a number of people here, we love, we have the best view in the morning, the greatest sunrise, and, uh, I also see the man from Nigeria, we like our trash service, they really do a good job, and if you've been on our road, it's a challenge even today, but we get terrific service from the, from the road department, and we hope you'll give them our appreciation. So, the fact that we selected this, and when Lisa mentioned this initiative, I was pleased that it was introduced by Governor Scott, because that really says in Vermont, this is a nonpartisan issue, this is an issue about being welcoming, hoping that we can bring more people who want to live here, who do business here, we need people to work here, so I just think it's a very positive statement, and I hope that you'll consider it, and we appreciate your time and your consideration.
All right. Thank you. Uh, anybody have anything on this at this moment? I think, I feel like it should be, um, brought to the voters at town meeting if it's something that we're going to consider, or, that's just my opinion.
I think we can bring it there, discuss it with them, but then, if there isn't that, you vote, we get a good feel, then the Select Board can come back to the next meeting, and go ahead and vote, I have nothing against it, but I always feel like we should at least run it by the voters, I don't think we need to get them to vote for it, we just need to read it to them, unless there's any objections, the Select Board wants to go ahead and...
Actually, most of the time, people are, it's kind, people are kind of happy to do something positive, you know, not in the middle of all the stuff you have to drag through, it's nice to have something that people say, sure, you know, so I, I would hope that that would happen.
I think we, unless, the objection, we could put it on, on our program, that we near the end, we have other business, we could bring that up and discuss it with them, and say the Select Board would like to go ahead, unless we find, and read it to them, so that they feel like they are included in the discussion. And then we could get it done before May, because it would be, firstly, it'd be done by the end of March, we'd have an answer.
Okay. Uh, the one thing I, I want to, just again, from seeing what's happened other places, is that if you go to the website, you'll see one version of the, of the declaration, and Deverston has come up with its own, which has taken out some language that sometimes people pushes people's buttons. Some towns really like to be, to just punch it, and others like to be a little bit more, you know, just say it, but say it in words that don't rock the boat so much. So, I would suggest that, um, you might look at it, or I could look at it, whatever, and propose language that you all feel good about, just so, just because I've seen that happen in other places, so.
Okay. Could I ask what language might be, ought to be?
Um, one, yeah, the one that's gotten, you can ask, for sure, um, it says abolish racism in all forms, and what happens is that people say, well, we're not racist, and then it gets all stirred up, you know, so in this one, I don't think they use that particular language. That's the one that I, uh, and then the other thing that people have changed is that, I think in the original, it doesn't have sexual orientation and gender identity, it just says something that is more, so people who have a large gay and lesbian community wanted to be really specific, and other towns have, I think, a little bit less specific. So, it's kind of...
May I say something?
Sure, yeah, you're the one who knows this.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, sexual orientation has, has been, been added, uh, and econo-, so, um, socioeconomic status has been added in a couple of instances. Overall, most towns, I'd say probably eighty-five to ninety percent of the towns have adopted the declaration as we've, as we suggested it, the other fifteen or twenty percent, whatever that remainder is, have changed it, and they've added to it. Uh, only in a couple of instances have any town, uh, you know, tried to take away something. But the, the other objection that we will hear is that we've indicated the groups, marginalized groups, that we refer to them, uh, with socioeconomic status and, and so forth, and, and sex, gender, social orientation apart, some, uh, three or four towns have not wanted us to enumerate who those marginalized groups are, and we've taken a very strong position that if you don't indicate who's those are, then the decoration has limited meaning. Uh, but that has, uh, that has inspired some conversations, so you should, you should just, uh, you should just know that. But if you look at the South Burlington one, if you look at the St. Albans, uh, declaration, if you look at the Middlebury Declaration, I think two or the three of those are on our website, uh, they're pretty expansive, because what they've done is not only take what we've given them, but they've expanded on it to include, uh, you know, some aspects of implementation as well.
I think the timing is the tightens for you guys, right? Because town meetings coming right up, so maybe it's smart to just take the original, and if people raise problems, then we deal with it after.
You have this plenty of time before May.
Pardon me?
If you still get this plenty of time before May.
We would have to have, we would have to have, we're going to read it at the town meeting.
The town meeting is March, but you're deadline is May, is what you're saying.
Right.
But if town meeting, if we read it and somebody would, at that point, say, hey, can you change this or that, that, or accept it, then the Select Board would take it and fight with it, but that, why, what we read to them should be what the Select Board thinks is the final version of what we were going to adopt. I'd hate to go back and say we're going to say this, come back, and then the Select Board changes and adopts it, because that's not what we told the voters we were going to do. So, I think whatever we have in our hands, and we're going to read it at that town meeting, this is what the Select Board's thinking about signing, and everybody says yes, or we all agree to change a word, we would at least leave the meeting with like, okay, we're going to have a meeting, and the Select Board's going to approve it, and we're done with it.
Well, that's, and that is sort of in line with what I was thinking, is you want to all be sure, you all feel good about whichever version you're doing.
So, the version you sent to us is...
I sent you the website that has kind of a few, but I don't, I didn't give you the Deverston one, so I could just hand it to you, and you could review that later.
That's fine, terrific.
And I can email you, I, you have a person that has my email.
Sally and I, yep.
You'd be welcome to email me or call me with any questions.
Sure.
Absolutely happy to help.
Okay.
I'm, as you can tell, I'm happy to do anything that would make this happen. So, should I just leave these with you?
Sure.
I just made ten, I wasn't sure how many.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for working on the budget.
We really enjoy having somebody come here that didn't have a Westminster act and access.
Yeah, Wes, you can take the boy out of Texas, or the Texans out with the boy.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Any other communications or public comments at this time from anyone online? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business, which A, B, and C are kind of all lumped together as budget, that's going to form the budget, help form the budget, so, um, we'll move on to unfinished business. Uh, I had called Joe to see if there was any adjustments on his end that needed to be done so we could get this budget fairly straight, and, uh, he had interest, so here we are.
All right. Well, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Um, I know we have, uh, we set up a contract a couple of years ago, uh, but I guess nobody really expected, like, you know, fuel to double and that type of thing. Um, the biggest challenge I'm having right now is that, uh, single stream recycling has gotten very expensive to get rid of. Um, I know four or five years ago, when we were doing it, it was on a positive side when we first started doing it, and then towards the end, I actually had approached the Select Board because it got, it went from paying me fifty dollars a ton for the stuff to charging me seventy-five. Well, we first did the, uh, the contract there a couple of years ago, uh, was running around eighty to a hundred dollars a ton, now it's almost two hundred dollars a ton, it's ninety-seven dollars a ton to get rid of it. I'm charging the town one thirty-five, so right now, I, last six months, I have been absorbing sixty-five dollars a ton. Um, the town averages about twenty tons a month, so quick math tells you it's around twelve, thirteen hundred dollars per month, um, that I'm falling behind, I didn't know if the town would be, would entertain absorbing some of that cost, I know I do have a contract with you, but for unprecedented things, I don't, I don't understand why the, you know, recycling would be so exaggerated, I mean, you're supposed to be doing the right thing with the stuff, but for some reason, they're charging you to do the right thing with the, with the recycling, so.
Well, now's the time to bring that up, so...
Correct. I'm glad you mentioned that, because I'd hate to show up here in March, right after you got that budget.
Right.
And then try to approach it.
Right.
So, thanks for the outreach, I know.
Line one eighty-eight, I believe, is the one you're talking about. I think that's the line, could be the one above it, but, one of those two.
Disposal of waste. Yeah, this is the fiscal year twenty-four, Joe, so that would mean, it wouldn't stack to January...
July.
Uh, July of twenty-three.
Right.
So, your contract goes to...
Through twenty-five.
Through twenty-five. And, uh, you know, one of the things too, is like, I put a, uh, you know, um, an increase of three percent cost of living, we got seven percent inflation now, so I mean, I, I mean, right down to wire ties, there used to be a hundred dollars, uh, you know, a hundred, uh, a hundred of them in a bundle for twelve dollars, it's now twenty-something dollars, everything's just blown out of proportion, I don't, I can absorb a lot of that stuff, obviously, but, uh, some of this, um, put a little strain on me.
So, you said that about thirteen hundred is what you're absorbing?
Right now, yes.
And you'd like us to take up a hundred percent of that?
It'd be nice if you would, but, I mean, uh, obviously, you know...
Or fifteen thousand dollars, roughly, or twelve hundred, fifty dollars a month, fifteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, roughly around fifteen thousand dollars, correct.
Assuming nothing changes between...
Assume, yeah. Well, I mean, um, I would try to hold it again as long as I could for it, you know, I was hoping that it would drop back down, but it never...
So, one, the line one eighty-seven's collection of waste, that's, that's just what it costs to do, we put in a pretty good sized increase into that. That line item, one seventy-five, that we're in fiscal twenty-three right now, is that line item you're thinking is pretty stable, is the other line item?
Um, disposal of waste. Yeah, if she has a category as the disposal part of it, then that's the part, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the, the collection is what we pay you to pick it up, the disposal is what you actually charge, and that one varies by ton, where the question is always...
Correct, yeah, depending on the month, you know?
Right.
Um, Christmas is usually heavier, obviously, then...
But that number comes from what you've been estimating for tonnage, so even if the rate goes up, how are we by tonnage? You see what I'm saying?
Um, well, my, my collection cost is my truck and me and my labor.
Right, so that shouldn't change.
That shouldn't change at all, correct. The, what's changing is the disposal of the single stream, which is probably what we have, I, it's not, you know, segregated whether it's disposal, single stream, or MSW, but I'm assuming it is.
But like I said, if it costs you so much more, but then if we actually give you less rubbish, you're saving money, correct?
Yeah, if you gave me less rubbish.
So, that number is a real...
Well, no, if you gave me less rubbish, it wouldn't matter, it would reflect immediately in your bill, because I charge you for what per tons I pick up.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, that line item, if all of a sudden, even if we didn't give you a cost per tonnage, it's based off how many tons we collected?
Yes, it's based off how many tons you collect, correct.
And that hasn't changed, or is it staying the same, or...
Um, well, yeah, no, the tonnage, it usually runs about the same, uh, we did a quick average for the last six months, it's about twenty tons, uh, a month of recyclable, I didn't get into the, uh, MSW part of it, because I'm still, we're okay on the MSW, that hasn't changed all that much, but the, um, the recycling part of it, the, the single stream. So, that is about twenty tons a month, and that is where I'm, I'm charging you guys right now at one thirty-five, and I'm tipping out at one ninety-seven.
Have you, can I just ask a question, have you thought about sorting, has anyone thought about sorting since it's gone up so much?
Well, it is, uh, that's what the single stream is, it's the sorting cost is what they're saying is going up, separating the stuff.
But I take it you're not sorting?
I'm not sorting this stuff, no, it goes to a MRF, Material Recovery Facility, that has a machine that pulls out the bottles and takes it in.
And that's not a thought to implement that again, so sort, no?
No, that's, uh, yeah, it wouldn't be practical for me to try to do it by hand, and one of those machines is in the millions.
I think, were you referring to the, the taxpayer sorting it, Ellie?
I just wondered if there was some, since the costs have gone up so much, I just wondered, that's what we used to always do, the sort?
Yeah.
Sorry, we did.
Yeah, we used to bring it down to, uh, back a long time ago, down to Brattleboro, it was like two different streams, you know, but now it's, everybody wants convenience, which is throw it all into one can, and, I mean, we're doing a really good job with, you know, keeping the one bag per week, so it's really pushing a lot of the disposal cost out to the recycling part of it.
Yeah.
Which is what we wanted, and that's...
So, I mean, that's tonnage, can I, if it goes up a lot, we're not getting, the recycling, we're not getting money, but if the other part goes up, we're actually getting income coming in from that.
No.
The, the regular landfill, where we're collecting money for the bags. You see what I'm saying? That one should be fixed for one bag per household, they go over that, if we start to get some money in.
Correct, yeah, they come in, they would either pay for some extra tickets.
Right.
Or, uh, there's some people, you know, somebody doesn't use them, next door neighbors give them to other people.
But that's all under line one eighty-eight, so I guess my question would be, it's at a hundred thousand, five hundred, are you thinking about going up to a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and something, or what, what number are you, are you...
Well, the, the number would be based off of the average is twenty tons a week, a month, and right now, it's running, uh...
Twelve forty.
Twelve, twelve, thirteen hundred dollars, yeah, basically.
You gave me one ninety-seven versus one thirty-five, that's...
Correct, I just did simple numbers, which was the sixty-five dollars.
That's fifteen thousand, roughly fifteen thousand, that's what you...
Yeah, and it's going to fluctuate, you know, five hundred dollars either way per month, but that's...
So, you're comfortable that if we put one fifteen in there, that would take care of us for the count from here, for the fifth, for the twenty-three, twenty-four season?
Yes.
The one we're going with the voters, well.
Yeah, I would say that would be, that would cover, that would be comfortable, yes.
That's not necessarily we give it to you.
Right, you're going to put it in the budget, see what happens. Yeah.
Yeah.
If you can consider it to, uh, that would be nice.
I'm seeing a consensus, am I changing a number?
Hold on a second. Did you have some...
No, my impression of since the recycling ordeal was the state's dream to begin with, are they offering any kind of help?
I mean, can't imagine, so...
They want the highest...
I got all the grants built, my and stuff, I'm just curious if they're offering any kind of relief, nobody, nobody, state, every town in the states is struggling with this, not everybody has the option, just raising their budget, you know, so I'm just curious.
Well, most towns don't offer the pickup, you pay for it yourself.
Well, that's true, that's true too, it's, time goes on, maybe that's...
But it is one benefit that's been well received in this town.
Oh, yeah.
Well, if you look at your, I mean, my average, uh, my average monthly collection, if you, you know, if you were just a regular resident, about seventy dollars a month now.
Yeah.
For that same service that you guys are getting for like less than fifteen dollars.
I think we could save some money for you, though, and you would help us, if you and Chuck got together, there's a lot of places now, they're putting plows in front of that rubbish dump.
There you go.
You could plow your way through while you're picking the rubbish up, and Chuck would save some money, and then we could, we could realign the highway for you, okay?
I'd be all for it if Chuck wanted to take the trucks and the guys and run it for it.
Is it, is it the consensus of the board to add?
It is for me, yeah, fifteen thousand, that's all. Yeah, that'd change that to one fifteen.
And fifteen thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was worth coming tonight.
It was worth coming.
Um, so the other two, the other line, one seventy-five, four forty, I heard mention of a three percent increase annually in this contract, and that number hasn't changed at all last year or this year.
What, we're lying?
I actually think it was five percent.
It breaks in July. It breaks in July.
That's when the increase goes up.
And I think it was five percent.
Is it five percent?
I think it was, the last contract, I think, was five percent.
Okay.
I think, I don't have it in front of me.
You don't have it, I don't have mine either. So, the twenty-three budget number looks the same in twenty-four proposed right now.
You on one eighty-six?
I'm on one eighty-seven.
So, it's at one eighty-seven, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, and I, you know, I heard the three percent, you're saying five.
I'm pretty sure the contract says five.
So, so...
You can check the minutes.
So, that line then, here, it wants to be...
Eighty-seven hundred, eighty-seven, seventy-two more? Can we just go to one eighty? I gotta present, we're guessing anyway.
We're in the middle.
So.
180,000.
You tell me what number you'd like in there, I'll change it.
I'll throw 180 and they can decide.
Well, 180 is, is, uh, $4,560 more. That's, that's not 5%.
184.
Is that the number you'd like?
Yes.
What everybody's comfortable with?
Are you moving FY '23 or '24?
This would be 24. We're doing 184 even?
184 even.
Okay. So, okay. Just those two lines changed.
Yep, right now.
I'll have, yeah, I'll have new numbers when we get further.
Yep. Since we don't have the sheriff here, what's, what would we like to do with that?
If I may.
Yes.
Provide some.
Yep.
Information as well. Ally actually did the communications with Karen Ashley of Putney, and came up with that they were scheduling 40 hours a week at a, under a contract for $104,000. Article in the Reformer for the town of Rockingham, considering two hours a week for $62 per hour. So, um, what I did on the spreadsheet that you have, let me find the line, I did 62 times 30 hours times 52 weeks. And on that line, you'll see it reads $26,720. Last year's budget was $60,000. Last year, 22, you actually had a budget and they didn't have enough staff. According to the article about the Rockingham decision, he is fully staffed, Mark Anderson.
He's told us the same here.
That he's fully staffed. That's what the article says. So, um, in a brief conversation with Craig while I was at the office, when he came in, I said, "Well, maybe if this is a contentious issue with the voters, let's put the amount of money in front of the voters as a distinct article." And so in the warning that I typed up, I backed off this 96,000 bucks, named it as a distinct article. And so when you pass a budget, you pass one without policing, and then that other article, they can decide what they want. By then you may know the rate structure that was going to be provided, but we don't have it. But I'm only going based on what has been provided in a public situation, 62 bucks an hour. Increasing, decreasing, I don't know if the rate changes based upon some threshold of hours that it crosses and the rate drops. So that's what I did relative to Winnebago County Sheriff. When we get to the warning, you'll see I actually spelled out an article that basically says that 96. And when presenting the budget for Article 3, I'm not including that 96 that you have in the spreadsheet as part of the expenditures and amount to raise by taxes.
I think originally, two, two town meetings ago, we were at the 90,000-ish range, I don't remember.
No, we were at, I'm just, I brought it. Fiscal year, we were 70, and 76, and 79, and 82, and then last year we proposed 60.
Yeah.
Because up until then, we were doing like full time.
I thought at the town meeting, John Ewald proposed to drop it to 60 from 90. Maybe I.
No, well, this is the budget that we went to the voters when last time, and it was proposed 60.
Okay.
It was also mentioned to cut it too on it.
Maybe that's what I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
So you have 60 in '23 is the number. And from the last meeting, conversation of, you know, the public is not satisfied with the service, that rather than having the board set a number in the budget, lift it out, and have the public set that number, and whatever they set is just going to increase the amount to be raised by taxes. But you're saying effectively, as you present budget, you had zero in there, what do you want? And then that, that discussion is left to the floor. And if they choose.
It's going to be brought up, you know, not every line, not every line ever is ever brought up, and you know that that one's going to be brought up. So might as well do it in an article. If it does an article, going back to what you and I were talking about, the money that's, that's allotted, whatever it is, stays in that article, stays, that line item can't go anywhere else.
Right. It's meant to be used for the service of policing from Winnebago County Sheriff, as I wrote it. You don't have to say Winnebago County Sheriff either. You could just say this amount for policing and go to any force that provides policing.
That's not, that's a good statement too, because if all of a sudden we decide, we need the money, if we decide we find another contractor, we would need the money, because we didn't put it in our regular budget, we need it in the article.
Yeah, and the article is specifying for service from who, how much. And it can be amended, of course, from the floor, so they may choose 36,000. What it doesn't say in the article is the price per hour and the amount of service you're going to get. That's dependent upon whoever provides the service. This is what we got given for a budget for this.
But we're going to explain how we came up with 96, if we go, if we go with.
Yes, someone should, yes.
But personally.
Well, I don't know what the rate is, and we may find.
I don't know if 56.
Oh, I don't have, yeah, that's why I don't know the numbers.
You'll make the red, the article easier, because I just think that, that everybody wants.
It was dated the wrong date. That's why I had it late.
96,000, low.
It's a lot to win.
Is it nonstarter or?
Oh, I think that's kind of.
Oh, it's a starter. They all want that.
So what's 20 hours? What's 20 hours at?
So do.
What does 20 hours come out?
So 62, 62 times 20.
Yeah, so, so with this, it's, it's quite clear just reading the bullets, 52, if your contract's at least 2,000 hours.
So we could leave it at 60, and we won't quite get 60 after 20 hours. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Okay. I'm putting it up for 60.
And make the article for 60.
Yes.
And that's, you know, the consensus of the board, and that's a change. It's easy enough to do. It has no impact on Article 1 because.
Before you change that, hold on.
I was, I was just curious, do we know what the revenue? Do we keep track of what we make for revenue from it?
Uh, there, there's a line for civil fines, or it's called ordinance enforcement is the revenue line, but that can be from state police as well as sheriff. There's.
So we all, we all separate out?
Local ordinance, it's supposed to be like eight grand a year. I don't get manager stuff anymore. I can't get on any portals for that.
Well, I just know every year we got less and less of the ticket because they were giving, they were taking, charging more to, out of it for the cost to train. Right.
The court system is taking more of the percentage.
No reason I ask, I have seen them with people pull over, and I was just curious where the money was going, that's all.
So local ordinance, 22 was budgeted 8,000, 22 actual, 8,999, 21. 23 has 8,000, and I know that ACH deposits coming in on a monthly basis that they get booked are anywhere from 300 bucks to 900 bucks.
Yeah, we don't have the revenue side of this.
But I don't, yeah, I don't have it on there.
We don't have the revenue side.
So we're, we're lucky to ever get 8,000.
I, I think 8,000 anticipated now. Again, the source of that can be any law enforcement issuing a ticket in town, and that gets tracked to the town where the ticket was issued. And so that passed through, um, when, and it's oddly enough, you can write a ticket today, and you might see the revenue from that ticket in three years when it finally went through the court system, through the appeal process. If, if it doesn't happen the next month, because it's dealt with when it's paid, and if they contest, it just drags out. So the revenue stream is not directly correlated to last month's charges.
What's the board's pleasure on this? 60,000, 94?
I'm at 60.
60.
60,000.
60,000 as an article?
An article, not quite 20 hours.
And then if the voters.
Well, we can't put hours in there because we might contract a different service, it's just 60,000.
Okay.
It could go to, we could end up hiring some other local.
No set hour here.
Thank you.
I think that's what we're going to go with.
Okay, so. So then on the warning. I had 96,720, we changed that to 60,000. So the warning you have in front of you is actually now altered. So will Article 1 when we get done with other conversations.
Did you want to go down through this, start at the front page and what's been changed or since the last time?
Uh, yes, I can.
Or did anybody have any specific questions?
I like threw a bunch of them, but I don't know.
You're okay, you know? I hope response, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I did, I did.
And, and I guess while I'm at it.
Well, you, you can start from page one.
Start from page one. So the first thing to really notice is property taxes to be raised has changed, and we just changed it again, though netting between what we just did for Gereo, what we just did for Sheriff, the property taxes to be raised is about the same.
So that has all the articles in it?
That is as if, this spreadsheet is as if everything that we put on, on for articles is assumed to have passed, this is what that budget looks like.
So when I asked you a question, the 780, it says budget is 780, and that also had all the articles in it. Even though we went to the voters.
The 78, yes. So the 23 budget, um, that was the summation to zero, which included every article, but I believe in 23, um, that I have to look to see if the library had the seven grand added to it or not. That was a specific separate vote.
I believe it did.
Yeah, so I'm trying to find.
I don't believe it were.
The library, now, see in 23, the library states $8,400, but there was a separate article, which I learned about last week. So 23's budget, as listed in here, doesn't include that seven grand. So what should happen is 23's budgets get adjusted again, and you'd summate this, this report. And I think the year-to-date is the seven grand and the 8,400 has been paid. That would be on the last spreadsheet you had last week for the year-to-dates. I took the year-to-dates off intentionally because what we're looking at is what is going to be presented.
Getting distracted.
That's the goal. So you, you hit the two big ticket items. I also want to hit, back down through from the top for the, because we roll. Another change is only, um, which you had seen before, is under health insurance. So this would be line 47. 23's budget's 85.5. The proposed budget is a 20% increase, 102.6. A known percentage that's been given basically to the towns from healthcare providers. So that's a, that's a jump, and that's way it is. The other one that changed from last year to this year, computer contract services, that's a contract VC, I think it is, VC3, has DT Tech, that's 30,000, was 27.3 in 23.
That's 50, line 52.
Line 52. Then, the town manager, uh, from our original in '94, dropped back down to 73, that's still there. Clerical salary, the 8.7%, went from 32,050 to 39,680. That was done by Ken before he left. The finance officer was provided by Ken before he left, 56,160. That's a position not yet filled. On the line 88, it did have a title of assistant treasurer, and in the last meeting, it had a salary of $1,000. It was brought to our attention that that line previously read contracted services, and that is where Nimerick Booktime had been being paid out of. So.
Thank you.
In 23. In 23, it was 13,000, it's been repeated in 24 for the same 13.
Thank you.
Again, salary lines just have the 8.7 in them. So zoning administrator wages, line 134. From Ken's spreadsheet with the manager and zeroing out this wage, we moved into this line, 21,000, which was the difference between his 94 and 73. It's my understanding this function will be performed by Ally. So part of her arrangement, her arrangement is going to be charged there with the manager. But I want to repeat on line 144, that we are continuing $20,000 in building maintenance for municipal buildings, and the concept that was brought up was to paint one side of town hall. That's all that lies, so that you have a plan for that. Line 149, heating oil for town hall. It was discovered that a bill made out to town hall was related to, all the tanks when they were replaced got filled with number two oil and propane, because they all got replaced. The bill came in under the heading or account number of town hall, it was all charged there. However, probably three fifths or more of that is really the highway garage tanks being filled. So Kelly is working to break that invoice down so we can reclassify the bulk of that single invoice over into the highway department for 23. So leaving that number as 2,500 for fiscal year 24 does seem to make sense. It just left the sheriff identical to what it was. And then with Gereo, we just talked about those changes that went on. And the last one for general fund is county tax. 27,800 in 23, 30,500 in 24.
What's your line item?
198.
Oh, sorry, number's 198.
Sorry. The proposed budget, yet to be voted on for the county, it has a 25% increase in the proposed budget. So if all things divvy out across the towns uniformly, I just plugged in a 25% increase to your cost. I did the 25% based on 23's actual, not based on 23's budget. The actual is about 24,000. That is the general fund in our new format of general fund separate from highway. Anybody spot anything relative to just general fund activity?
Just so I can follow, because we changed the layout.
Yes.
So I have last year's budget, which people will look at, so. So I have last year's budget, which people will look at, so we look at property tax. And now we've divided it up, so I'm trying to get back to where we are, because if the voters say, well, what, what did you do? So we were at one, one million five hundred in two thousand twenty-one, one million seven hundred twenty-two, last year we were one million nine hundred. So then all of a sudden, we come over here and they see nine hundred and eleven, so obviously it adds. So if I sit it right, you have to add that line with the line two oh-four. And that comes out to be one million nine nine seven, so it means that we actually increased about eighty-three thousand. Does that all sound right?
Yes, yes, so.
We're gonna have to explain that, because if the voters have been looking at what it's been.
Sure.
And they're gonna look at what happened to their budget.
What'd you do?
Yeah.
So the last page, very last page of the handout with the budget. There is your comparison for the last three years. Taxes at the top, there should be one more page in the back.
I think we're missing the very last page.
Very last page.
Six of six?
No, it's the one that has, oh, we didn't get that one, alright.
Didn't get that one. That's okay.
I got a bunch, hold on.
Yes, that's, uh, that's where that comparison, what was the grand list, what was the amount raised by taxes for projection to projecting tax rate? That's where, you can point to that page, if that gets published, you can point to that page and say, this is the comparison over the last three years.
Trying to get back to all of it, because everybody brings their books and they're going like, you could read right along, you can see what it is. Where did the first time, or all of a sudden it's gonna look drastically different?
And, and it is, um, by decision of the Select Board to separate out the Highway Fund, make it, whoop. Broke it out, we went through that exercise, and that's why that last page really brings it back together. Here's what it used to do, here's what it does now.
Oh, that makes sense, yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
And so, in, in my spreadsheet, I've got it all formula-driven, so as I change numbers, that back page is gonna change.
No, thanks, that's a big help, that's why I was trying to look at the book.
Yeah, obviously, you know, and, and one of the other questions, which I did not put on there, was, okay, so what does that mean for a hundred thousand dollar home? You know, if the tax rate's sixty-seven cents versus sixty-nine cents, you know, what does it mean for a hundred thousand dollar home? They often wanna know that term, what, what is my taxes gonna go on? And, you know, if your assessment stays the same and the tax rate changes, it's simple math. I can't tell you what's gonna happen to school, so don't consider this your total bill change. And, and again, the fire district is gonna have its own set.
But, so the town, if you had a hun- just a hundred thousand dollar house, you were gonna get a sixty-seven, a six-hundred-and-seventy-dollar bill, now you're gonna get a six-hundred-and-ninety, if you got a two-hundred, you double.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely, yep. So, with that.
You do the comparison, so that's, uh, so maybe four hundred bucks on the two-hundred-thousand dollar house.
Yes. So, moving on then, starting at line two oh-four, that being the Highway Group. We're gonna line two oh-eight. This, we'll start with the twenty-three, budget twenty-three sixty-three thousand, which I had labeled as transfer-in from garage and we booked it in the town report last year, it said transfer-in from bridge. So we reversed the booking from the garage and did nothing with the bridge, because the bridge is over in the Bridge Fund being worked on, not in the Highway. My interpretation was, when I read that, that the seventy-eight thousand for the tank replacement, which was budgeted in twenty-three, was being supplemented by that sixty-three. We're gonna be under thirteen thousand against the seventy-eight thousand dollar budget for the tank replacement, because most of it took place, the big chunk, took place before.
Purchased under twenty-two.
Yeah, purchased under twenty-two.
Those whole suffered bill. One had nothing to do with the other.
Well, that's how it got interpreted. So we cleared that back to no income, and we have a couple thousand more to be spent on tanks, um, I think, but we'll be way under the seventy-eight thousand. It's in that line on up for twenty-three. So I, I relabeled that line as a transfer-in from other. Therefore, wherever we're bringing money from, it just goes into the same line. And in there is two hundred thousand dollars. And that's based on Article five, six, in the warning. In that article, as written by me, shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize all surplus balances from the FEMA storm fund of the July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one storm event to be transferred to the General Fund with two hundred thousand dollars to be used to reduce FY twenty-twenty-four taxes to be raised? So I've included that as a separate article. So the first article has a budget and is not including in the amount to be raised by taxes, it adds two hundred thousand dollars to it. This article, if it passes, reduces that number to be raised by taxes by two hundred thousand dollars.
Is that in the last page? Because I didn't calculate.
That is, that is the.
I didn't calculate that two hundred thousand. Right? Well, when I did it, I kept pretty close to what you had, but I, I only took the one million eighty-four, I didn't take that two hundred because that would, that would reduce the property tax.
Right, built into the budget, we consider that two hundred thousand passed.
Okay.
In the articles, it's a separate article, so Article One, which I don't even think says how much to be raised by taxes, doesn't. It doesn't. That's where, in my spreadsheet, there's an additional section that says, here's what Article One's amounts are, why? Here's the seven thousand separate, why? Here's the minus two hundred thousand. Because the, we could present this with all the special articles removed, and then the budget would be altered as it appears the following year, like twenty-three, the seven thousand's missing because it never got plugged in after the article passed. So that's why I'd like to present it all, as if it's all gonna pass. So, if the board's comfortable with Article Six like that, that is why that particular line item shows two hundred thousand as being transferred in. The question is, what is the surplus of FEMA fund? Which begs another question. Someone has done some research and shared that with me, and my suggestion was.
That I share?
That she tell you.
Okay. Hold on, I gotta find it.
It's okay.
I have a pile. We received on November eighteenth, a reimbursement for three hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. I was under the impression that we were done with FEMA.
But it wasn't.
In, correct. In confirming this, no, we're not. Even though the federal portion of things has been obligated, they still need to close projects which require a little more paperwork on our end and can take another six months to a year to get it complete because government is slow. That was the legitimate answer. There is a large project, which is Hartley Hill, Davidson Hill.
Yeah, all the FEMA sales, yeah, that we were told we'd already gotten a check for.
So that we haven't been paid for, according to Kim Kenerigde. And that is a hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Nine eighty-four.
Nine eighty-four, yep. Of which, we don't necessarily have to wait for the federal government to okay that to get our check. We can write a letter requesting a drawdown, and the state will pay us seventy-five percent now. And then when the state or the federal government finishes everything, they'll pay the remainder. So, that's kind of where we're at. There's the potential for another two hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-two cents that we can get. But it may be up to a year before we get that full amount.
Two hundred and twelve thousand.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The hundred and seventy, no, that includes the hundred and seventy, okay.
The question as to, uh, the question as to, um, what the hell did she call this? Uh, CW fifty-four, right? This is.
Yes.
The fifty-three thousand five twenty-six fifty-seven.
The administrative project.
Yeah, this is a little gamier.
Yes, it's not.
But that, that is inclusive in the two twelve that she's, that she's alluding to.
Correct.
And if I'm not mistaken, the emergency relief account, um, from the state will not be distributed to you until all projects closed.
Correct.
So that's even more money, which is typically around ten percent, depending upon your road classification, could be seventeen and a half percent of the project.
Correct.
More money? Chuck, did you have something?
My only question was, I, I guess I'm confused, because I thought that those money had already been obligated by the federal government to the state.
Correct.
And it was up to the state from there to distribute it to us, and that was your holdup, was the state. You just said you had to send finalized paperwork with the federal government.
Correct.
So the federal government released the money without paperwork?
So, this is a state form, but they provide it to the federal government. Megan, I can't remember her name.
One, two.
Yep, go ahead, take the ball.
So this is the P C C R form. That was given to us by the state authority. On this form, she has, very nicely created, uh, yellow, yeah, yellow marker. Those things that we need to provide, which is simply the actual date that the matter was completed and certain paperwork from the portal as far as financial progress to support, uh, these, uh, claims. Moreover, we are to, uh, we are also to supply a, um, excuse me, um, the representative of Megan from the state has to go and actually take a look at the last project to make sure that.
Got done.
It got done.
Sure.
And then, we're done. We then send, as Kat said, we sent a letter in on the one-seventy-six requesting a drawdown, um, on the money. And that money will be distributed, actually, seventy-five percent.
Sure.
Before all, everything is finalized.
Oh, right, right, no, I get all that, but I was just, I guess we're misinformed, I guess. That's where the confusion is, because the federal government misinformed us on where things actually were.
Okay. And the state, and the state rep today was.
For my own knowledge, next time, this doesn't happen again.
No problem, the state rep today, I think she was.
Yeah.
Clear, concise, coherent on what we needed to do.
Just going on their portal, it shows that everything's been.
Obligated and is done.
Yep, right.
According to the portal.
Yep, because from what I can see. If they go grab the hundred and thirty-two thousand, which is seventy-five percent, that still don't go into twenty-four, it goes into twenty-three, correct?
Ash-based, it goes in whenever we get it.
Right.
And, and it is relevant to the FEMA storm fund, which then in turn creates surpluses, which we then move.
So should we count on it for twenty-four?
We, we are counting on with that article, we are counting on what we already know and have, which is around two hundred and thirty-six thousand.
I don't think you're gonna see that money from them before this needs to go.
No, we, this is money we've already been reimbursed.
Right, I'm talking.
Yeah, that other money, talk about it when you get it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, it, it might be available for twenty-five, doesn't sound like it will be unless you request seventy-five percent of it and get it after July one. Then you could consider moving it. The drawback is, should you fall into an audit and fail, you have to pay back. But that's true for anything you've already gotten the money for as well.
Yeah. I don't, as I drive around town and look at bridges, blacktop, this building, everything, I don't see anywhere where you have a surplus. We are so far behind, you're never gonna catch up. So I would rather see you obligate anything you've got that you think is a surplus. So I mean, so if we got two hundred thousand dollar surplus on a home that is assessed for two hundred thousand dollars, what am I gonna see for savings on my taxes?
Hundred percent. Can you dig it up?
What I'm saying is, if the, if we have a two hundred thousand dollar surplus in our budget, and you're gonna put that towards offsetting taxes, what am I gonna see?
Excuse me, I'm nothing, I just got a little bit.
Right?
So the, the.
What Chuck is saying is, instead of giving the money back to reduce taxes for that, what could be a small amount to some, it may not be a small amount to others, it's actually better spent putting back into your infrastructure, your building, your.
We're better off until we actually have the money in our hands.
To not worry about, yeah, yeah, don't.
Yeah, that's great news, but it's like anything else, do we actually have the money? I wouldn't even talk to the voters about it.
He's talking about the two hundred thousand right now, that's there now.
Right, two hundred that we've already agreed to move?
Yes, we started writing a special article to give back two hundred thousand dollars to the taxpayers. My personal opinion is, as a taxpayer, the responsible thing is, is to put it into your infrastructure where you're already behind on stuff. We were talking a week ago about Rob and Peter to pay Paul, Rob and the ARPU, to put money towards the bridge. When we're talking about the same amount of money that we're sitting on, we're talking about giving it back to somebody that's only gonna change their taxes by maybe ten dollars. That's all, that's all, that's the point I'm trying to make.
No, but, and I'm somewhat, but every year the voters ask about the money coming back, and we could have easily raised the cost two hundred and then left it alone, but to me, it's, it's being, you're showing everything, hey, we end up with two hundred thousand. The voters could actually say, go ahead and add it. But to me, if we really wanna plan on, let's just keep increasing the budget, and if we get money back, give it back to them. But at least we're accountable for what we ask, and if you're coming back to me and saying, you need two hundred thousand more, we should ask for it.
Well, I think that's what Chuck's saying, we're not increasing.
But he's, no, he's not, he's saying, I'm gonna take this money that's left over and keep it, that's not.
I'm talking about.
Using it.
But it's using the money and then the taxes are increased.
So, if I, if I chase the squirrel, um, in twenty-three's, uh, twenty-two's town meeting, the voters authorized transferring three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from General Fund to the FEMA fund. They voted, we did it. This basically is asking the voters, can we now move the money back to the General Fund? That's what this is.
That's where I would pay.
This is, in, in the use of this money, if it was going to just simply come back and generate a surplus, then the auditor didn't want us to do that. And that's why I say, with the purpose of two hundred thousand being used to reduce taxes, the difference being in this case, had you not moved three hundred and fifty thousand, you could have applied surplus funds in Highway to reduce taxes and achieve the same goal, but then your FEMA fund basically sits over there in a debt, which is fine, we know we're gonna get money sometime. That's really what the auditors wanted, but we had the voters instruct us to do something, and now I wanna ask the voters to instruct us to put some of that back. And that's the reason that exists that way. The auditor would have liked, uh, us to not have moved it, not have asked the voters, and then as you generate surplus, move it into reserves for capital. But we crossed that line when we asked to move three hundred and fifty thousand first time. So that's the reason this is this way. It, it basically is asking for a reversal of a decision that was made at the last town meeting. It, it basically is asking for a reversal of a decision that was made at the last town meeting. And that, that whole question at last town meeting wasn't really needed. You could have simply run this fund in the deficit until you got the money back, because cash is already out the door. That, that was explained several times. So, it's the board that can decide, do you wanna keep the $200,000 in there to reduce taxes, assuming the article passed, keep the article separate? What is available today, we know, is about $336,000. That is a surplus. That includes current year's activities. Whenever we get a surplus, whatever that surplus is, this motion allows us to move it. And we have to use $200,000 to reduce taxes in twenty-four, specifically written in.
I prefer leaving it there, I'm really, every year, they wanna know about. Since I've been here, we've always had, except for the storm, money that we give back.
Yeah.
Chuck needs $200,000, then come to us and tell them where you want it, and we'll budget it.
Highway equipment, two hundred and thirty.
Yeah, good. But now, that's what we're being accountable for.
I defer to Craig, too, on this.
That's me. We went and asked the voters last time to move the money, and now we're giving it back. Like I said, we're accountable for the budget, which is, if Chuck comes and says, I need $200,000 more to do that, we're gonna go ask for it.
Yep.
But this is money that was left over from here, and put it back over here, and it just, I don't know, it's just an honest way to deal with the voters. They could easily get up and say, take the two hundred and put it in the bridge fund. We can always have that discussion. But it wasn't earmarked as an expense, it was, the revenue came back. Or it was actually earmarked for the... From, it's from the storm.
Yeah. When we initially did the $350,000, you had a contingency fund. They had a hundred and fifty, and we drained it. And then we took $200,000 from highway and moved that over to FEMA. So in fact, the $200,000 is to compensate the $200,000 highway moved out. And that's in twenty-two, that happened. And now in twenty-four, we're saying, okay, now we've got that money back because we got reimbursed. Let's give it back to highway, that's where we took it from. Then next group, maybe in twenty-four's town meeting, you'll ask for a hundred and fifty, go back into your contingency to replenish that that was taken for the storm. But we don't have enough to do both. So I'm suggesting that we just do the highway fund. The article is there, presented, it's in the budget that way. Article one is not impacted because our total expenditures are what they're gonna be. It's just the amount areas by taxes can be reduced by this number if that article passes.
What's the board's pleasure on this? Leave that this? I'm just coming there.
A week ago, it was, put it in there.
Like I said, we, we're going up, we're asking for increases in all our budget numbers because that's onto what we want. All the side of the revenue, that's a different whole discussion. And that's all come from the storm with the voters. We need to ask for extra money for the storm. We got more back than we thought, we're kinda like, give it back. Because they get the reason we gave it to us. Meanwhile, we're, we're asking, hopefully, everything that Chuck wants now. Maybe next year, we have to ask even more. But we need to, at that point, that expenditure is like, here, this is what we need to fix the roof. Here's what we need to fix the highway. Hoping that the amount that we're going after is enough to run the town.
All right, so...
That's it.
So that's how that was built in and made as a separate article. The same way that we had asked them to move the money out, we're asking them to move money down. It's not the same amount because we don't have that amount available to move back. So then, I wanna jump...
Sure?
Yep.
All right.
Not seeing high confidence. All right. Line two eighteen. Going from three hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred twenty-four thousand, six fifty-eight. A number derived that by the previous manager, which I believe included hiring two part-time guys at twenty-five bucks an hour to, uh, in the payroll.
Two eighteen.
Line two eighteen. And for the rest of them, the eight point seven percent may increase July first to go with the cost of living. So that's a significant jump, and that's the explanation that I understand for the reason that number was placed there. It's not a number I derived, it's a number that was in the spreadsheet that we started with.
Wouldn't say leave it.
That's what we, that's what you asked, right?
I didn't do the math, I didn't...
No, you asked the two positions part-time.
Well, the, the two positions part-timer, who replaced two full-time positions without benefits, were no raise. So I'm not sure how that all figured into this, but that was the, that's the deal.
Okay.
So, sure.
So all I did was stick with the number that had been presented December fourteenth or somewhere around there? It's the same number?
You wanna stick, you wanna stay with that? So, it's a ten percent increase, so maybe half of it is just the cost of living. The other, the other half would be, like you said, what you added. That makes sense?
But in the audit, it should be less.
It should be less, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I'm looking at the budget line.
Should be less. We've got, yeah.
Well, it's your benefit... We're asking the question, we're not telling you. But all you can tell you was, we budgeted three hundred ninety-three, now we're asking four and a quarter. If you do the math, that's roughly ten percent.
Thirty-one thousand against thirty-nine-three is a ten percent number.
Yeah.
And eight percent is your cost of living.
Nine percent, which is cost of living.
So you have two percent of that is available to give raises to people who need raises.
Or merit, you mentioned merit or something?
Right.
I, I, I think we can defend that number if there's, if there's a question.
Yeah, just in the, in the raw sense.
Yeah.
When you start with a large number and do eight point seven, it's a large number.
Correct.
I'm just saying, potentially, it's gonna be...
That's great, that your, that comes out of yours. You can use it for whatever you want to do. I've got your money, I'll give it back, okay?
Then, down to retirement, uh, which is line two twenty-five. Retirement expense is going up because the FEMA's contribution by the employer is going up, I believe by a half a percent. So, that budgeted number of twenty-one got recalculated to include the increase by the half a percent and the fact that even part-timers with thirty hours have to pay dues. So, FEMA's is just, have a natural increase in cost for the employee, or the employee's side is also going up. So their contributions couldn't be sucked out of the eight point seven percent that they're getting more. They're not gonna get it all. Next one down, two twenty-six, which is, uh, health insurance. Again, the same twenty percent reduction of increased premiums. Going from nine thousand seven fifty to one hundred and ten thousand. The rest of the line stayed the same till you get to two thirty-six, line liquid chloride. Twelve is the current year budget, seventeen thousand is the next year budget. It was inherited from previous manager, and I assume that Chuck understands why we needed more. Uh, contracted services going from seven thousand to ten thousand. I don't know what is necessarily going to happen there, but...
Two thirty-nine?
This is line two thirty-nine. So, for the current year, you have a seven thousand dollar budget, and you're at a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Oh, that's because there was the ARPA bridge and, or the East Putney Brook Bridge, and...
And so...
Something else got lumped in there.
So, so you use the term ARPA?
ARPA funds were used to pay for that bridge.
Sure.
It's included under contracted services for the hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Okay. Let me be clear.
Yeah.
You have an ARPA fund, and these charges were charged to your highway fund. If there is an intention that ARPA is meant to pay for this, they either should be reported out of the ARPA fund or we transfer value out of ARPA fund into the highway fund to supplement what we did.
Chuck, I think Chuck can explain that.
I, I'm talking accounting, I know with a project. It's accounting. You're using funds from your left pocket, but you already paid the bill from your right pocket.
Right.
You gotta somehow either pay the bill out of the right pocket or we move the value, if you will, over to the highway fund so that it's not borne by the taxpayers, it's borne by ARPA.
So, I don't believe that the ARPA fund came out of the general fund. It's the twenty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-six and forty dollars for grants and aid. Um, the Better Roads Grant for fifty-six thousand, the category eight grant for seven thousand, uh, seven hundred seventy-five dollars.
So...
And...
So all of that revenue is offset these contract services?
That's right.
And not ARPA?
That's what I'm saying.
Before voted to use ARPA funds...
What they came out of, it got, it got coded to ARPA, ARPA paid it. The, the slip stuck turned into the office and was told, this gets paid for, it was written right on it, ARPA. So, it wasn't, didn't come out of my budget.
So we just need to clarify in twenty-three what we're doing for those slips. The hundred and fifty-one thousand is in the highway fund, and if those grants were meant to offset it, perfect. But if any of that was meant to be ARPA spending...
That is, that is why I've asked that we create a unfunded line item for that. So I got something to code these grants to, so then you can match them with your revenue, and it won't be quite as confusing, hopefully, in the...
Yeah.
When it comes in.
From the finance position, I'm not confused by it, but I...
You're not.
And that changed?
Yeah.
That changed what I expect to see. So if none of that relates to anything to do with ARPA, it's self-contained in your highway fund, that's where it should be. So, the budget remains for twenty-four to be $10,000. We're cutting down two trees, that's about it next year.
For ten grand? Twelve hundred dollars a day is what I paid for three trucks, bucket truck and a man.
So the next one that's gone up is repairs.
So, is line two fifty-three. And again, that's a number that I think the previous manager had plugged in, so I've done nothing with it.
Where'd you come up with that?
It's line two fifty-three.
No, but we're, anybody have any idea why it went to fifty?
Just the cost of parts alone is, is that. Yeah.
What, are we...
That's parts of repairs, not gas and fuel. Gas, fuel, and oil stake seventy-five grand. What?
You're all right with that? Seventy-three?
I think so.
Man, I have a hard time, where do you at? Is there a bottom line on? I'm just looking at F twenty-two actual. You know, we budgeted fifty-three, I'm just looking at where we are in...
Oh, in twenty-three, yeah, I dropped, I dropped the column with actual because this is what will be presented in the town report when we get done. And we had actual last week, it's changed only by a week's worth of invoicing and payroll.
Right, what is the total right now? I'm trying to find it. It's not on there. Right, you gotta add them all up, right?
Yeah, I can, I have...
No, that's fine. I'm just curious how we were on the fifty-three for this year, that's all that was going on. We've done fifty-three for next year, but...
No, like we talked about earlier, Craig, as we get back in track, we're getting rid of some trucks that are out of warranty.
I know all that, I'm just trying...
I'm just saying that we should be in better shape than we have been in the past because hopefully, we've kept trucks longer, recorded it longer than we should have.
Well, there's one line item for miscellaneous for nineteen thousand, so I was just trying to figure it all out, but it still looks like fifty-three is gonna be a decent number for you to stay at.
Right.
But you still have a way to go too, so, okay. So, so the question is, it was fifty-three, and then, then, that's why twenty-three, we asked fifty-three, and then for some reason jumped to seventy-three. I guess my question is, why, if none of us know why it's seventy-three, that's quite a jump up. Would you be comfortable with sixty-three?
Well, what's, they're giving us a eight percent increase in our wages, I mean, everything's gone up.
That's not that much. I'm just asking, I'm asking...
No, no, I'm just saying that...
If you came up with that, Chuck, I wouldn't be asking that, but they're, they're saying the town manager was here to put that number in there.
Right, but...
That's your number, you tell us.
Tires and cotton edges and everything is...
So if it's steel...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's your number. You, you're gonna live with seventy-three.
What do you, what do you think, do you wanna cut it?
No.
Doors? Doors come to us, we go over budget, next year we ask for more, right?
You are at nineteen thousand, eight fifty-eight, forty-five as of last night's backup.
Out of fifty-three?
Out of fifty-three, thirty-seven percent of your budget.
Nineteen eight fifty-eight?
Well, that is making sense.
Nineteen eight fifty-eight, one four five. Actual, right now, as of last night's backup, which AP checks were done yesterday, eh? Yep.
So we only use, I mean, we only use twenty, we're more than halfway, no, we're not, yeah, we're more than halfway.
You're more than halfway through the year, but that doesn't mean you've actually gotten invoiced for everything you've gotten.
But still fifty-three is a way off.
It's, it's way...
So to go to seventy-three...
I just dropped a truck off down there, it's eating a gallon of antifreeze every fifteen minutes, we think that's enough.
Chuck, I'm just...
No, I'm just, alls I'm saying is, things happen.
It wouldn't only take one major repair to treat that up pretty fast.
You said that right now, we're nineteen thousand. You can have one mishap and spend twenty-five thousand dollars just like that.
I know, but we can have a discussion all night. It's your number, is seventy-three?
I said, I'm comfortable with it.
You'll leave it there.
And then we...
You'll leave it there.
Okay. Then, the next big one, line two seventy-eight. Twenty-three's budget's a hundred and seventy-five thousand, we know we've spent two thirteen already. We know we're getting another one in twenty-four and have a debt payment. And so, through Craig, the number that was agreed upon a week ago is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to go into that line. So that means a new truck and a debt payment, directly paid for by tax dollars. And I wanna say, less two hundred thousand from the FEMA fund. Transfer to bridge, fifteen thousand remaining the same. Transfer to retreatment, hundred and thirty-five thousand remaining the same. And again, the transfers or used to be separate articles for those two items are simply put into your budget. They're the budget process, not a separate voted article. And I think that changed in twenty-three's budget anyway. So, any other wants and desires other than to just have somebody...
Yes.
...to solve a couple hundred thousand dollars?
Have I got all the main stuff done?
Yes.
I think so, yeah. So, uh, let's just go back to, uh, item thirty-three, which is interest. So we've got six thousand, and I've done the calculation, I have been, and I mean generous. So even assuming an aggregate, and I'm working off the actual part-time... So even assuming an aggregate, and I'm working off the actual part number of ventures we've already received for the year, the aggregate balances. So, assuming a .50 return on the actual balance that is averaged, right, that's where we're at. That's starting the year at zero. We're now at a 425 aggregate, excuse me, 426. So what I did was, I took all the statements and I dropped it by an additional $300,000 average. And then I also dropped the interest rate all the way down to 138. That brings us all the way up to $25,000. And that's assuming we don't do anything. Anything. So, there's no way we're gonna end up with $6,000 if interest rates stay down. So we'd be looking at $25,000. If we were to be proactive in this sector, knowing what we already know, I'd probably stretch that to like close to $50,000.
So if we were.
This is the aggregate, so I'm just working off the actual, the actual statements of money that we have that's aggregated. Doesn't matter how much is in it this particular month, it's the aggregate, because we get paid interest on the aggregate. So if we have 2.9 million for even for, let's say, 45 days, it drops down. This is the interest calculated that we actually get paid, even when the account drops, let's say, 1.12 million. These are all the statements.
What happened, so we're trying to, again, we did $12,500, we only got.
Oh, because you're at zero percentage of rates. Okay, so just, this time last year, interest rates were zero.
Correct. So in 23, the year we're, we're in now.
Right.
We budgeted $12,500, where are we at now?
We are at about $6,889.
So we're halfway through the year, we're just, we'll, we'll be on schedule for $12,500.
Right, but we moved from a zero to a half.
So why wouldn't we at least change that $6,000 to at least $12,500?
Well, I, I'm telling you to change it actually, the more accurate number is gonna be $25,000.
That's your expertise?
Absolutely. And I'm being conservative. As you're, I'm using a 1.38. Now, if we were to make a change to a sweep fund, I mean, you're looking at a 341. So you're up to about $46,000 on the aggregate. Because that's what the, that's what a sweep fund does. It's going to give us the money interest based on, at least the bank I'm talking to, based on what the aggregate is, not locking it up into a CD.
Right. A sweep account, every night basically your checkbook is zero.
It is all the time.
And, well, we used to do it literally by calling the bank and transferring money. But now that's an automated process for banks who do provide sweeps.
Yep.
They also have a threshold limit of which you don't earn any interest on a portion. That number is typically driven by some cash flow prospectus and for some towns it's 50 grand and for other towns it's 250 grand. And the larger you are, the larger that number is. And that, that's how the sweep accounts work.
Right, so I use an aggregate number at the high end of only 3.18, I think it could be higher. So I'm only asking for $25,000. But if we did this right, we would be close to $50,000 using a 318. Because they're gonna give us, they're gonna give us, they're gonna give us the money, they want the business. If we were to do that, if we just left things the way they are, they're still gonna come in around, let's say, the bottom end, 22.5 to 25.
What could go wrong between now and then?
Interest rates could drop precipitously. But we don't lose anything by putting that in there.
Well, you don't raise taxes.
Don't raise taxes, so you're going short, yeah.
Which is a good thing.
Yep.
Unless you run short of the, of an over expectation.
Which at, that number is, the number I'm plugging in, is highly unlikely that we would come up short on that.
So, a penny, as we discussed last week, is $26,868. So, if you change that by $20,000, then you're, then you're taking a penny of the tax rate by saying you're not getting more interest. It's a functional board to decide.
Our budget is the same, we're just gonna tack the taxation that we actually tax the people could be lowered by a penny.
The amount to be raised by taxes.
I, I mean, if, I, I gave us literally a 25% cushion, which is even more than that on the downside.
My only concerns, I've been here a long time, one time Ellen and I were talking that when we switched over, we were getting more interest, but we were also being charged a lot, all these fees. And we decided that, hey, let's just, all the fees go away that we weren't paying, but yet we weren't making the interest. But things change, so. I'm just not an expert, just know enough that I rely on them telling us what, what we're gonna do, so, but.
I'm using a 1.38 bottom, I mean, that's like, that's like nothing. But right now we're using .5, which is.
That's on the bank statement.
Right, that's just brutal. 1.38 now is the average. And we're talking money ma, market, we're not talking sweep.
Did we finish this?
Yeah. That's all I wanted to.
So, well, we gotta come up with that number, so. $20,000, $25,000?
22.5, if you're, you know.
22.5?
22.5.
Listen, you're gonna haunt me if you come back and, and the budget is off on the trucks, I'll haunt you if this is.
That's fine. I, that's fine. Like I said, I, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying, if we could literally do the sweep now, assuming things take that, you'd be at $49,000. Using these numbers, unless someone could tell me why these numbers would shift so dramatically over the last five years. In other words, the aggregate, could you tell me why they would shift?
But, right now you're analyzing where you've gotten a million dollars extra in ARPA money. And, and that's in your bank account. And FEMA, FEMA money coming back is in your bank account. And so, those are non-returning streams of money once they're spent. So, that could be 25% of what's in that account, I don't know. I haven't done the same analysis. But when I do here, I'm looking at all the bank statements. There are bank statements that say Westminster Fire District Number 3 on them too. And those are separate, not part of the town. I hope you didn't include those, because they.
That's not what I was given, I believe.
No, not at all.
There you go.
Good, because the bank statement looks the same, just has a different title. Then you've got a community development fund with, I forget who, TD maybe, that's got 50 grand in it. That's gotta be segregated because that's the.
It's a community.
Well, that's not included in this case, but.
There's a, yeah, there's a.
Stuff you can't touch.
Exactly.
Yeah, the stuff you can't touch, as long as you're not including those as values to be invested differently. Because you've got restrictions with federal government with one certain component.
I'm happy with a 22.5, I mean, I'm, that's, that's really low.
I'm sure for it and anytime.
Casey, yell at me.
Anytime that we can go.
Don't yell at me.
That, that offsets a juryo at least in one line.
Someone's hand is up. Hello?
I'm not sure how to do that. Nate, we'll get to you, hold on.
Okay, thanks.
You good?
So am I going by consensus to a 22.5 on that one?
Yes.
Yep.
Nate, did you have something?
I was just, I, I don't understand the investment stuff, is this something new that the town doesn't do currently?
That's a question, yes.
We don't invest money.
We don't invest money, we're talking about the fact that, Nate, hi. We're talking about the fact that interest rates were 0% on the federal funds rate this point last year. And now gone up 6,800% to an aggregate of 4.38%, that's the aggregate. So the money market has moved from zero extensively to 1.38. With a sweep account, you're probably looking somewhere close to 3.5. But even if you're taking a modest amount, let's go, which I did, take it down to 2.38. You're looking at well over 25, you know, you're looking over $25,000 as opposed to what we were doing last year with the zero. That's, so you're not investing any money at risk.
Yeah.
There's no risk to what we're discussing, it's just how radical the increase in cash and cash equivalent return has gotten. And it, again, yes, it depends on a financial institution. A financial institution that provides a sweep would provide substantially higher rate of return, but there'd be no risk to the, no, absolutely no risk to the asset. Does that answer your question?
Not really. So, you're talking some number, somebody said 22.5, 25, so you're saying we're gonna take 22.5? Or we're adding 22.5 to the budget so that we can take that and put it into this sweep thing that you're talking about?
No.
No.
The earnings on a bank statement, increase of the budget from $6,000 to $22,500.
All right, so I, that's fine, I, I don't understand all that stuff, that's fine, I was just curious, I kept hearing something about adding 22.5 or adding .5 and what's your number is what people were saying, so I was getting confused. I don't know, I'm not even gonna ever understand investment stuff, so there's no point in talking.
On the budget, that when you were here, or the last few years, we've been putting $12,500, I don't know who put 6. So 6 never meant anything, that's, this is a discussion. If you wanted to really look at where we're at, we had put $12,500 in that line item for the last two years. What he's proposing is to change it to 22.5. So it was never nothing. And I don't know where we came up with 6 anyways, that was just a discussion, okay?
What's the line item you're talking about? I'm sorry, what's the line item?
Yeah, it's the interest earning on it.
Okay, so you are adding money.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're changing from last year $12,500, this year it'll be 22.5.
Okay, and where is that being invested at? What institute?
That's just the interest on your bank account.
Projected interest.
Right.
Yeah.
Interest that we earn off our checking account and all that, it's been always there, it's just.
Increase in the money market rate.
Which will lower our property taxes, Nate.
The amount to be raised by taxes.
Okay, thank you.
But to be clear, it's not being invested.
No.
No, no.
It's just.
There's no investment risk.
A change in projection.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
And you can even go back and say line item 35, what was that? I don't know, but leave it like it is, but in 22 we had $11,000 come in, we only budgeted $750. I mean, so, I think we're pretty comfortable, that's what made me look at it going, okay, I don't, right or wrong? There's, we're, we're not really any more than we were the last year, because if you took the 12.5 on it and you put the 11, you know, we've, whatever, I think we're okay.
So.
All right.
After all this, you want some bottom line?
Yeah. That'd be great.
Give it to me. $63,000 up.
No. So, four, if you would grab your warning. There are two numbers to change from the warning. And I will tell you the numbers, you can write them in on your warning and then give you an explanation of it. So on Article 3, see if the builders of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum of to pay the indebtedness of the town, repair highways and pay general expenses of the town for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024. The number again, 2632577.
2632577.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, and the other Article 5 change from the 97 to 60 to $60,000. Which we discussed earlier. I'm drawing it down, say that. What does that mean? With Article 3, 266, 2632577 of the expenses, taxes is $2,99,397. That's if, with Article 1, just the way it is. Assumes nothing about any of the other articles. Okay, meaning it does not have 7,000, a separate article, 60,000, a separate article. Those articles will only increase your expenses and increase the amount to raise taxes. Then the article for the 200,000 to reduce taxes ultimately will drop, if everything passes, will drop the amount to be raised by taxes down to $1,966,379. The current year that we are in, the taxes for the town was $1,936,44. That's what actually, is what we're calculating. So assuming the same grand list that we build on for the current fiscal year exists next year, the tax rate would be .6813.
Say that again, I'm sorry Chuck.
.6813.
16813.
And last year's tax rate was .6750. So you're looking at 63,000ths.
We raised the budget, property tax by $30,000. Is that right?
That's right.
Well, that's pretty small amount.
Well, you did put it good primarily because the article of the 200,000 is your contributing factor. And 28,886 or 20, yeah, 26,886 goes into 200,000 several times. So without that article to move the money back and use 200,000, it's a significant increase in your tax rate.
Right. $30,000 out of $1,900 is pretty. I'm comfortable with the voters will have to put that way.
And, and again, presuming that they will authorize you to use 200,000 to reduce taxes in '24.
Even if they don't, they're volunteering to pay it in taxes.
I don't know that they.
Me too.
But. So basically, inside of three weeks, that's what we've worked ourselves, I don't know if I wanna say into or through.
Through.
So.
Good job.
The, the town report, in, in my opinion, will have the spreadsheet with everything in it as if it is passed. I will fix the 23 budget for the 7,000 for the library, it just seemed to be overlooked, so that the actual budget comparison will still work. And then the explanation of how you arrive at the numbers within the articles. Why does Article 1, it's, it's high in the budget, but it doesn't include the following two things? And the property tax numbers, when you add them up, don't add up to that value, because I've considered that in fact these things drop. But your article does not state how much to be raised by taxes. Most towns do have a number there, but your article doesn't read that way. So, with this completed, my intentions would be to have it redistributed to the board so that you can review it, so by the time the town meeting comes or you get questions based on somebody watching this video, you can reference those changes, see what it looks like, how it turned out. I'm hoping that the grand list goes up, so the tax rate will go down. But, can't project, no, can't see.
Everybody, everybody on the board happy with that?
We used to have the article written as the way you said.
Yeah.
And then somehow we were told not to do it anymore, because it used to be, you remember, you would say to raise $2,600 into actually, the property tax would be $1,900.
Yeah, yeah.
By property, and then somehow they told us we had to drop it and go to this way, so this way it is.
All right, everybody good on that?
Yeah. Good job.
So, now with the warning. So now with the warning and those last two changes, if you, that was on your agenda to discuss as well. That warning now with those changes, if you are ready with the budget as it is, with the articles the way they are, I think you could adopt the warning for town meeting and then probably tomorrow have a copy for you guys to be able to sign. Because tonight, unless I email this to you and you run down for it, I don't know. Just, it's gonna, you gotta have a, you can approve it publicly and then come in and sign the document before the town report gets done or preferably this week. And we know your, that your section of the town meeting is warranted.
But we, as a board, we always have to vote it. To have this meeting tonight to accept it.
Well, the warning, your portion of the warning, yes. The fire district's gotta do their own and the school has gotta do everything by themselves. But for you, that would basically quantify that you have established your budget, established your warrant articles to talk about. And-
So we need, we need to move Article Three so that we have-
The whole warning.
The whole thing.
As-
The whole warning, which, which could be read aloud, um, but-
But basically, we're gonna, to move to, right now, to move to accept the budget as two million, six hundred thirty-two, five hundred seventy-seven.
Yes. As Article Three states, that, that's your budget.
Right. We need to move that first, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we move to to accept, uh, the proven sum of our indebtedness for taxes to raise is two million, six hundred thirty-two dollars. Six hun, two million, six thirty-two, five seventy-seven.
I will second that. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the, um, amount to be raised by taxes is-
The expenditure budget.
Expend, expenditure budget of two point six two, five, seven, seven.
Close, six, two point six three two, five, seven, seven.
I, I have it written, right? I didn't read it right.
Yeah.
All right.
So that is your expenditure budget.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Now you need, you need-
So the, I'm not sure that you necessarily need to. Article Four is by petition, but Articles Five and Six are by the board's choice. So I would have you as well move to present those two articles and then adopt the warning.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, move the article that the sheriff's department we raised the taxation of sixty thousand dollars.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars for Wyndham County Sheriff.
By article.
By article. Article Five. Any discussion? Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion that we, uh, go ahead and authorize the Article Six that we ask the voters to move two hundred thousand from the FEMA storm fund over to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four general fund. Is that correct?
So I would like it to actually be, as it's written, authorize all surplus balances from the FEMA storm fund transferred to the general fund with two hundred thousand dollars to reduce FY twenty-four taxes.
I said that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It's written out perfectly. You can cut and paste. We'll give it to you following.
Motion has been made and seconded to move Article Six, to approve Article Six, shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize all surplus balances from the FEMA storm fund of July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one storm event to be transferred to the general fund with two hundred thousand dollars to be used to reduce fiscal year twenty twenty-four taxes to be raised? Uh, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Carries. Now you need one for the-
Move to adopt the warning.
Make a motion to adopt the warning as written, as presented with-
Modifications.
modifications.
Authorize the board to sign it at its convenience in the future.
Correct, as he said.
What the heck motion was that? She's over there trying to write it down.
It's been yours, Craig.
No, it was like, she's over there trying to write that one down. That wasn't what I, so. I'll second it, whatever it was.
Thanks, Craig.
Motion has been made and seconded.
To present the warning as modified.
To present the warning as modified for the board to sign at its earliest convenience.
Sorry, Melvin. No, no, you're fine.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
I have to sign this before Friday. Look, because I will be away for-
I'll have it tomorrow, I'm sure.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Budget is officially done. For now.
Soon as March fourth comes around, we'll let you know.
For now, yeah. Thanks, Chip. Thank you. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Well-
Sorry, sorry, touch into you.
Well, no, I just, I just have a quick, quick question. Where did we end up with? We talked about last time about FEMA and putting towards bridges and stuff like that. Did we, we didn't do that?
You mean ARPA.
ARPA, I mean, I'm sorry. ARPA.
I think someone from the committee would have to bring it to the board to approve it.
No, we can just approve it without-
But why do we have a committee?
Well, sometimes we ask ourselves that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I-
No, no, so the only, I was just curious if this was designed with that intention?
Well, I'm with him. I would like to have the offer. There is a committee. I don't want, it's like board say-
I don't wanna bypass. I don't feel like bypassing.
I'm not telling you to do it or not. I, I've got other plans for that money if you're not gonna use it for a bridge.
No, but we should have the committee back here.
What, I didn't know why we left it, that's all. That's all I was asking. We didn't leave it anyway. Okay. It was just a discussion.
It was just a discussion.
Correct. Okay, cool.
So the bridge fund is still underfunded.
So we might not need it because it might be years and years before they ever get it.
So on a, on a somewhat related matter of bridges, based upon the balance sheets that I gave you post the twenty-ninth of, of December, the bridge fund having a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in it, the, your share for the one twenty-one bridge, is that enough?
No.
We don't, we don't really know, so I don't know how we change it because we have-
I'm sure it's not enough, but we also don't know.
So the-
Well, right.
It's a starting point, at least better than I think we thought you had.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The last projection before they canned the previous plan and started a new one was that our share was gonna be like two hundred and fifty-four thousand or two hundred and forty-five thousand.
They're gonna restart it all over again.
So it's gonna be different.
Chip's right. It's a start.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, it's not gonna be enough.
Right, but I think that, that, so when we see more of the FEMA, you might at that point take that, um, when you can remove it from FEMA, you can either pass that through your highway, put it back into the bridge fund, or directly move it to the bridge fund. When we have the next round of surpluses, which not sure when they'll be.
Well, if that, if it's not gonna go out a bit until this year sometime late spring, we're not, you're not gonna see any construction there until minimum twenty-four, probably even twenty-four.
Yeah, they're projecting twenty-four.
So-
So will you take twenty fours that we just approved? Now you're gonna add that to that one sixty-one or whatever, whatever that number was, so.
Yeah.
We're gonna get closer as we go, but it's still gonna be-
But at fifteen thousand a year as your contribution?
We've been adding more that way.
Yeah. You're not gonna get there past.
No, 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 for sure.
From FEMA, we might be able to, to the next round, move it that way instead of acting contingency, but but no, you've got resources and if, if you decide you're gonna use FEMA to, to do that bridge, I mean, use ARPA to do that bridge, then we move it into the bridge fund for that purpose as well.
Which time wise, we might run out by tomorrow to do that.
On ARPA.
Yeah, to, to make the commitment.
Correct.
But if you, right, but if someone committed, if the committee came and we committed, pick a number, whatever that number is.
Right. A hundred thousand, you could spend it easily before twenty-six.
You could, if, if the bridge came up in twenty-five, we ended up, for whatever reason, having enough money to cover it, that might, I guess we would have to figure out what to do with what we just committed that money for, I guess.
Yeah. We'll use that money first.
Correct.
Yeah, well, well, that's-
It's the last in, first out in that case.
Okay, yeah.
Because you, you, there's not an issue if you have reserve left in your bridge fund when you're done. There is an issue if you don't have enough in it to pay the bills, then the highway's gotta pick it up or you run a deficit there and fund it, back fund it later.
So there's ways we can-
There's ways to do it. But I think it, but I think you, I'm not sure you understood, you even had that much money already sitting in that reserve. So one of the things I would have you consider is putting in a listing of your reserves and how much is in those reserves as of June thirtieth, twenty-two.
That's a good idea because every year they've, somebody's gonna have been asked.
You can say, here's what it was at twenty-two, here's what it is today because we've added more to it. But that's twenty-two.
We've been asked almost every year. But I will say, we've had, before this board, especially when Sheldon was here and everything, when we called the bridge, one of the big discussion was how chaotic it was gonna be by making everybody go to the back Westminster Road and will they come up with Henwood Hill Road and all that? So we've had a week or two weeks now of exactly that happen.
Test run.
A test run, exactly. And I will tell you, the traffic on my road, back Westminster Road is tremendous, but I will say I haven't seen anything on Henwood Hill Road that they were all worried about. Nobody's taking that shortcut.
However, we need the sheriff on back Westminster Road now.
It's actually, it's solid traffic, but it's not chaos. It's, it's tolerable, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, you really, really know it's supposed to coming down the ramp. Because you look, you just saw a line of vehicles coming, all these people just like-
I don't, I don't think it's terrible, terrible though.
It is not that bad. It's, it's, like I said, it's tolerable. That's why I said, it's, you wouldn't, it didn't really affect us that much other than the back Westminster Road, you know?
Getting out of my road sometimes can be a little tricky and it's not.
But everybody was worried that we were, that Henwood Hill Road, I mean, nobody, I haven't seen any traffic on that.
Henwood Hill Road's so rough right now. If you drove across it with your tongue hanging out, you'd bite it off.
We have to talk about highway.
It'd be the last. All right, moving on. So we're good with budget? We inadvertently skipped over to Articles for Town Meeting, so that's good. I think we do need a real quick executive session as an update. It'd probably be less than five minutes. Wouldn't be much.
Your call.
Heard that before.
Well, yeah, we're just- Yeah, or we can wait. I mean, it doesn't have to be.
Don't think there's anything that we should have discussed for another day.
Let's just do it now. We'll get over with.
Okay.
And, uh,
You're gonna need me for anything before the nineteenth? I'd say now.
I don't think so, but I think we should, I think we should invite Ally into this because this is, has to do with pay, some pay.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
This is for, what is this for? This is for-
Whatever the motions you just got handed to.
Continual town manager negotiations. It's a legal, it's a, it's a-
Right. Do you want me to read this as?
Yeah.
Okay. You ready?
You know what mine is? Oh, uh, hold on.
Wait.
Boards, committee, sorry.
Yeah.
No, no, you need to make that now.
Okay. I make a motion to go into executive session, being that premature public knowledge would clearly place the municipality, the town of Westminster, the public body, the person or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage, as outlined in one VSA three thirteen of Vermont State statute. I would also like to invite the following persons into executive session. Ally. Allison Bigwood. Intern town manager.
I'll second that. A motion has been made and seconded to enter an executive session. Uh, I guess I'll reread this, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, being that premature public knowledge would clearly place the municipality, the public body, the person or persons involved at substantial disadvantage, as outlined in one VSA three thirteen of Vermont State statute, and invite, uh, Allison Bigwood as intern town manager. Uh, any discussion?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We'll go into that after other business. Boards, committees, and commissions? Anybody have anything? No? Okay, uh, other business. Any other business at this time? Seeing none? At eight thirty-six, we'll go into executive session.